So I am going to call, oh my goodness. Sorry. The 28th, oh God, I'm like messed up tonight.
We want a selectmen's meeting.
Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Can we all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So I don't have any announcements this evening. I'm assuming that there's nobody here for anything that's not currently posted on our agenda. Seeing is none. The one and only agenda item that we have this evening is the presentation of the compensation reform.
So I'm going to pass these around. This is like the baskets from Chopped. You see your mystery ingredients. You have 20 minutes to prepare an appetizer.
I got peanut butter and shrimp.
Oh, come on, that's easy.
That's easy.
Thai peanut sauce.
Oh, there you go.
Shrimp, you're all set. As you all know, this has been a project that's taken us quite a long time and we've had a number of staff involved. So over the weekend and yesterday, the rest of the team went through this, did the QAQC. And so this is almost ready for posting. Actually, at this point, it's just presentation, just cleaning up the fonts and the, but I've got the information that it's necessary. There's probably one more slide to add. What I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, because we all do this all the time, we skip to the end, go to the summary. This is the best way of thinking about an executive summary. There's a, right before Appendix A, there's a table. It's only half the page because the slide isn't finished yet. Budget impact summary, general fund. And no, there are not. Page numbers will be added, but this is two-thirds of the way, a mile, 75, 85% of the way in.
Okay.
Looks like this.
What's the heading on it again?
Budget impact.
Right after it looks like this, Helen.
Just before the Appendix A, the compensation table reform budget impact summary general fund. Got it.
So what this document deals with, while he's looking at, I'll just give the preamble with a wind-up.
Mike, take mine.
Do you have a copy for yourself?
I do.
You want to give Helen this one and give me?
Yeah, you want mine and I'll, yeah.
Give that back.
Give this to Helen?
Yeah.
Here you go.
Page number.
You have to be patient with me, guys.
No.
It's just more fun to shuffle paper.
I guess you're trying to give me a challenge and I.
Chronologically, anyway.
And that's how COVID has spread, Mike.
Oh, yeah?
All right. The levity has already begun. I'm trying to be serious over here because it's a serious topic. So we spent all this time doing this program. I just want to make sure that I'm careful to describe what the document addresses. The document addresses the general fund impact of a somewhat more comprehensive reform that included rates of pay for the different enterprise funds and other things that are not under the control of the select board. So it also only treats with non-union, non-contract personnel. So you will see town administrator, a finance director, or a police chief, or fire chief, or assistant chief and lieutenant are not in this document, Lisa's position is not in this document. So this is only our non-union staff, non-contract, general fund. So we thought this would take just about $250,000. Ends up taking a little bit less. But what I'm going to show you on this budget impact is that if this proposal were not to be voted by town meeting, we would still have compensation tables, people would still get steps, and there would be a COLA. So what I'm comparing is a 2% COLA on the old system with people who are eligible for steps getting steps versus the new proposal. So that's not the complete change. It is only the impact of the program that is being proposed. Are there any questions about what this document deals with? So the bottom line is there is a total expenditure of $161,702, with 85% of that spending going to hourly employees, either by promoting them into management ranks because their duties have been fully assessed by the committee to be management duties. That's the lion, that's about half of the total. And then another $57,000 going to office assistants and public maintenance workers. So that leaves just a little bit under $24,000 for the current management ranks. So that is your executive summary. That's what the program aims to do. It will all be accomplished within the context of a balanced budget because while that would be a lot of money to anyone to find on the street, in terms of our budget, that's not a lot of money. By way of context, that's a little bit less than half of the new revenues raised by a 2.5% increase year-over-year in the levy. It does not including new growth, not including all the rest of our receipts, just the levy. The rest of this document, I don't want to belabor, but I will skip to pages where there are pictures. And the first I want to talk about, I probably should have put numbers on when I was hurrying to get the grids filled in. About five pages in, it says compensation table reform, proposed new policy regarding gaps between grades. Looks like this. Two columns?
Correct.
The two, the two tables are labeled. One says existing grades, the other says proposed grades. How you doing, selectman?
I think when you find the page, touch your nose.
You want to just keep switching back and forth?
I'm all set.
Oh, you're all set, all right.
He's keeping up.
Yeah.
You got it before Kevin.
So.
I know, I see him.
One of the first steps of the analysis was to collapse the table, and we've talked about this a bunch of times and I'm not going to go over it again. This is the actual numbers. All right, so I wanted you to see what I was up to, what I was trying to fix. Under the existing system, the highest level of management is M5. And that grade is only 7.5% higher than the base for M4. So you have all that additional responsibility that may go along with managing one of our larger departments, but the difference between you and the next level of management down is only 7.5%. And then there's this nugget here, it says M2, 25%. And you'll see, I largely preserve that. So what is the difference? The M1 grade is where we're putting all these positions that are being upgraded from hourly to salary because of a specific aspect of their work, their job description that qualifies them as management. But they don't necessarily manage any one or any budget or any assets. That starts at M2. So the gap between M1 and M2, in the old system was 25%, and my proposed system is I set dollar figures and the percentages are outputs, whereas in the old system, the percentages were the, were what was governing, right? So you get all these odd numbers. And so on and so forth. You'll see what I've done here. In the proposal, on the bottom, if you look at the PMs, those are highway workers. Right now, we don't have anybody at PM1, by the way. We just don't, we hired maybe seasonal workers at PM1, but we don't really have anybody there. We start new hires at PM2, sometimes step 5, just to get them into the door. They're only getting a 5% bump as they get more responsibility and get to a higher grade. I've changed that to 11%, so I've doubled it. Are there any questions about this page? Pretty straightforward. This one took a long time to draw, so I can't not talk about it. But I thought it would be good to visualize the difference between the steps that exist now and the steps that are proposed. So this is your career trajectory now. If you have a public service job in Douglas, you have 10 steps. It's never been implemented the way it should be, so it's all done basically in annual step increase until you run out of steps, you know, you don't go up at all. And I want to spread that over 30 years. And this bottom line is labeled with the percentage between each step. So over a 30-year career in Douglas, I'm proposing that your, your final wage would be 36.5% higher than step 1. And right now, it's stuck at 22.17. That's exclusive of Douglas. Any questions about the steps we're doing?
So, just a quick question on that. So the steps look like they were just year-over-year prior, right?
Correct.
So now it's, you get a step for the first three, no step in four, then your first one in five, and then 10, 15, and there in five-year increments afterwards.
Correct.
Got it.
In regards to the hit on this year's budget, it's, we're balanced, it's fine. Next year, the year after, is where we'll see increase in pressure?
No. So the pattern will be different now. So now we have a certain number of employees who are at step 10, they don't get any steps. But a certain number of employees are getting steps. But now that we've widened out the distance every year, it's going to be just as chunky, right? Everybody might be on path to get a step at some point, but not necessarily that year. So if you just got one.
It starts at the same year.
Right, you're going to wait five years. So we can run this out in a forecast and give you the actual impact of it, but it's a very stabilizing element here, making a lot of people wait five years before they see another step. So what I'm trying to do is make the annual COLA a more valuable policy tool for the select board, and for the town administrator as personnel director. Because that's how we're supposed to be able to keep track or keep up with our neighboring municipalities that are looking at the same employment pool as we are. If we have this rigid step system and it's expensive enough where we don't give COLAs, then we just keep falling further and further behind. You see? From that point in the deck, I'll just march forward slide by slide so we don't lose anybody. This is, I like drawing like things that look like microscopic creatures, those are like parameciums or amoebas. But that's actually the groupings, the groupings. So we raided all the positions and then we grouped them on a grid. There was clearly some separation between the different groups, and that's how the grades were populated for each category of employee. Then we benchmarked, and then we, after we benchmarked each position, we established that we would create step 1 at the rate that we would have to advertise to be competitive. And we took the employees' actual time in the seat they're in, not time with the town, time in the seat, and that became the step they would be assigned to in the new grade. As we get into the detailed charts, there were managers who opted to improve the position of their managed staff by giving them a merit evaluation and changing their steps, giving them a higher step. There are two or three instances of that. Slide after this is all words and description. Slide after that is a management duty test from Code of Federal Regulations, which interprets the Labor Standards Act. All very heady stuff, not really necessary for conversation unless you have a question about it. The slide after that is another management duty test regarding Massachusetts law on confidential The Massachusetts Labor Relations Board has interpreted statute, which is Chapter 150E, which is the Bible that we all live by for labor relations in Massachusetts, and its definition of employees and management-level employees. And there was a carve-out in the statute. And I'll read the relevant language. Employees shall be designated as confidential employees only if they directly assist and act in a confidential capacity to a person or persons otherwise excluded from coverage under this chapter. So in Massachusetts, just because you handle a lot of confidential information at a sort of management level or view, you are not necessarily a management employee. You have to be directly assisting someone who is excluded from the act on confidential matters. More typically restricts that to labor relations or employee relations. There is, however, in one of the cases, in the matter of the town of Greenfield, in the salary schedule, Employees Association language that says, "Regular exposure to confidential material directly related to labor relations policy or other equally sensitive policy information, while directly assisting a person excluded from the law's coverage is grounds for finding an employee confidential." This became a really important part of our inquiry because we have a number of people or positions that we anticipate will report directly to the town administrator on the town administrator's specific duties that involve confidential information. And that is the only way to get someone to be a manager if they don't manage somebody else, period. That is the only way. You can put somebody in the management table and exclude them from the provisions of Fair Labor Standards Act. So I made an effort here to make sure we got everybody who could be a manager into the management categories by parsing out this information. Are there any questions about that? Over time, I anticipate that these next 10 pages will change. And they will change based on how much the town grows and how big the individual departments get. Right now, the scoring rubric is set up so that we're looking at the actual departments we have, and who manages what size budget, how many people are managed, whether or not the manager is involved in discipline, manages confidential information, interacts with the state or interacts with the public. Those were the things that we use to score the management positions. Knowing full well that the only way you actually are a manager is if you have personnel management or confidential information management is part of what you do. The rest of it doesn't count. It just adds ways to distinguish between the grades. Is there any question about how we rated management positions?
Your committee floor, five?
Five.
Is that a role that the personnel board used to take on, or is this different?
No, that, it's some of the activity the personnel board traditionally did. They scored the different positions.
Yeah.
The qualitative difference here is that the people that were working on it now have insight into the positions as they're currently configured and the skillsets that are required. And perhaps a slightly less rigid scoring system. We weighted the different management skills according to their importance in a general sense across all categories of managers. And then we came up with weighted average scores for each individual skillset in the scorecard. And, you know, we worked a couple of meetings to arrive at really, really tight consensus. I don't think there's any dissent from the way that we rated these positions. So there are four positions that were hourly that are recommended in this proposal to be moved into management, pardon me, management roles. And they're each different in their own way and have different, this is probably the crux of this proposal, so I'm going to take a little bit of time going through it. Currently, we have a highway foreman who is a PM5, so he's an hourly employee, but he's actually managing the other employees in the highway barn and is involved to some extent in discipline. And he's also completely in charge of occupational safety and health concerns in that shop. He also manages all of the town buildings as a budget, as a capital budget. So this was kind of a no-brainer to take this position and move it into the management This employee currently earns a lot of overtime because his role includes snow removal. And thus, it's a pretty important part of the income of the position. It was very much in the forefront of my mind that the management scale had to be brought up to a level where if we had promoted this employee into the management role, the salary plus any stipend they earned would more or less equal the annual salary plus overtime as an hourly employee. Because the idea of this program was not to hurt people, it was to put people in a better position. The result of this is that the risk is shifted to the town. So we will pay this employee no matter whether it snows or not. But you're talking about $15,000. That was a typical annual overtime for that position. Are there any questions about the highway department foreman going to management? The next position is economic development project facilitator. I'm going to change the title to director. It's currently on the table as an MS4, which is miscellaneous. For the record, I am not changing the miscellaneous table. It's that catch-all that we use for election workers, summer workers, but then we also have some fairly highly compensated employees in there too, because they don't fit into the scheme, specialized skills, et cetera. And that's why we started off with this position, but this is the position that benefits from the interpretation of the confidential information provisions of the law. Because while there are significant responsibilities here, none of them rise to the level of management except for the fact that the employee deals with a great deal of confidential information directly with the town administrator and reports directly to the town administrator and to some extent the select board on variety of matters, not just trade secrets for potential partners, but our legal issues, our litigation, and our land, our interests and rights, property So the team scored this position as an M1. The, are there any questions on this one?
Before you move on, or you're going?
Well, it's up to you whether you want to, I know you want to ask or talk about this one. You can talk about it here or at the end.
Where do you prefer, yeah?
I work for you, Helen.
Well, before we hired somebody to give us a little direction from time to time.
Can we do that at the end of the page?
Okay, sure.
Let me go through the next two and then, I think it'd be a good time to have that conversation. The next position is presently the assistant treasurer processes payroll for the town and is involved with benefit administration, specifically onboarding and the occasional questions we get, mostly around health insurance. The employee expressed an interest in stepping up and doing a more active role in human resources, a more traditional HR, so a much broader scope than just the numbers. And the superintendent of schools and I have had this conversation about needing to create that position. And it won't all be done at once. It can only be done as our revenue growth and the issues get us to the point where we need this position. Arguably, we already need this position, right? So there isn't a whole lot of buffer. When we go through the union contracts and create grievance procedures, we're going straight from the department head manager to the town administrator. There's nobody in between. So the town administrator more or less ends up being step 2 instead of step 3 in the grievance process. We need someone who understands human relations and human resources well enough to be able to have those conversations and not expose the town to unnecessary liability. Presently, the position handles a tremendous amount of the town's most sensitive information. So it's all of our employee data is safeguarded to this person. So my proposal is that we would rewrite this job description and create the position as a, what did we end up with hours on this? 30?
30, I believe.
And it'd be 30 for now. What we foresee is that in the relatively near future, the next year or two, we might have to replace the assistant treasurer with a straight-on payroll position, payroll and benefit administration, and then keep this person, if she wants it, and move up and do more to deal with both the schools and the town. Both organizations have their specific needs. I'm not overly swayed by the argument that the school world is so radically different that we could never teach anyone to do both the schools and municipal side. The school's more complicated. If you can do that, then you'll be able to do this. So I'm not really of the mind that the two organizations should each have an HR person. I'm not, I'm not impressed by that. But here, we'll be going from OA3. Bear in mind, that's the middle of our current scale for office assistants. We go all the way up to 5. This person currently serves the town as an OA3 hourly, which is beyond a steal, it's almost an insult to the employee, to an M1. Any questions about that position specifically?
I know we're fronting the money in the beginning. Has there been talk of the town to the school?
So when it, when the position morphs into that greater role, yes, we'll have to have that conversation with the schools. And then lastly, there's a position that should have been promoted up to management quite a long time ago, and it's missed, been missed quite a long time. The current office assistant in the Board of Health was upgraded to OA5, and I want to say it was before I started, there was a decision to upgrade Suzanne Kane's position, which was assistant to the board and the town administrator at OA5. And I think this was done at the same time. Because a good part of this operation is in the transfer fund budget, which is an enterprise fund, transfer station budget, which is an enterprise fund. It doesn't often attract the attention of the select board or necessarily even the town administrator, because the Board of Health kind of seized to it. I've dealt with a number of personnel issues down there. A fair number, actually, in six years, probably had three or four pretty significant blowups. But that comes to me as a step beyond this manager, who's also managing the budget, which is over $350,000. And then there are any number of part-time inspectors that need to be coordinated and recruited. One of our biggest contracts as a town, I'm going to say it's our second or third largest contract, is our trash hauling contract, which this person does a lot of the negotiation and contract administration around it. So without a doubt, this is a management position. So we're going to upgrade this, we're recommending upgrading this OA5 to M2, adding three hours a week. Now here's the thing, if we do that on the transfer station's budget, we just went through this whole rigmarole about stickers. So we cannot load the transfer station enterprise fund with all these costs. So part of what you see in my net impact that we went over first is we want to take this position, which is currently split 19 hours with the town, 11 hours with the station, put all 30 plus three more hours, so 33 hours of this person at M2 on the general fund budget. And then we will take the office assistant in that, the part-time office assistant in that office, and move all of those salary costs, wages, over to the transfer station. It's actually going to be a slight net increase to the transfer station, but nothing that's going to affect anybody's sticker price. That's an important policy decision of, I'm going to ask you at the appropriate time to actually vote that as a separate part of this, because that is a reorganization. To some extent, it certainly is a reorganization of the way we fund the position. I just don't think I can do that on my own authority for more than six months. So I would need your, your sign-off. Now we're at the end, Mr. Chairman. Now we're at the end, Mr. Chairman, of this page.
Go for it.
Mr. Chairman, okay. I've been involved in economic development for probably 50 years. I hate to admit my age. I served at one point as the first economic development manager with the South Shore Chamber of Commerce. I was the economic development manager for the town of Plymouth for several years. And I actually built my law practice from those fundamentals and advised people about which program would work for their real estate investment, or I was often hired by a local community to help set up their economic development programs. So I know quite a bit about this position and what other people have done with it in other communities and how important it is. And I think that with the development happening now in the town and going to happen, it's sort of unprecedented maybe in the last 50 years as to importance and significance to the town, particularly to our finances. How many times we all went to town meeting and people would say, okay, we need more business in town, you know, that we're oppressing the homeowners? Well, now we're, we're heading in that direction. If you look at some of the, the numbers that are coming into the town, we've got $8.1 million, I believe, in infrastructure. We've had the new building that's under construction of $1.2 million, should net over $1 million in tax revenues each year. I think we've gotten, what, $1.2 million already on building permits, and we're going to get more on that. And even with the first building, I believe our commercial tax base is going from 6% to 11%. A lot of people have contributed and helped to make these things happen, but I think the economic development director or facilitator, as he's formerly called, has taken a lead in this and been extremely innovative and successful. Surprising to me that he's been as successful as he's been. The two main obstacles in the town's development over the years, when I served on the Economic Development Commission with, with other people, was that property was not owned by one serious developer-minded person. And secondly, we didn't have infrastructure in the town. Well, those have been remedied, and we're moving into the sunlight, so to speak. And I think that the economic development position is worthy more of the salary that is proposed in, in your presentation. I did a little research from salary.com, and the salary range for Massachusetts for economic development directors ranged from $83,580 to $102,505. And that's for somebody maybe with a good background, but probably hasn't produced as much on the table as, as what we're presented here with, with our current economic development director. So I think, I think we should do something to match, closer match, the abilities shown and accomplishments that have been made by the economic development facilitator. So I, I think that should be in 80, 81, $82,000 if I mentioned a particular number like that. And even that, I think, is on the low side, but trying to compromise, I think that's a thing. So I feel very strongly about this, that this is where the action is in the town. This is where all the money is going, new money is going to be coming from to fund all our other programs, whether it's schools, whether it's the public works, whether it's any equipment we need in the town. This is the source of revenue that's going to do it for us. And I think we should back the, the positions that are important to that. And I think that the, the presentation is low on that, and I think we should get it up into the, into the 80s as, as reasonable. I think it's still on the low side, even from the salary survey that you see. So that's, that's my piece on that.
Matt, where are you on your budget variance? Draft budget that's out there?
Pretty much the same place I was at. So as far as I'm concerned, on the, strictly on the numbers and on the bottom line of the budget, you have room to do whatever it is that you want to do. When I would have to maneuver around it, I could not imagine you doubling or tripling the salary, so.
No.
There's room.
Not this week, anyway.
Well, we're not asking, Hal.
You'd be smoking something if we were.
Whether it's, whether it's part of this package or part of the overall budget, I agree with you. It's been repeated a couple of times here at this table, looking to catch lightning in a bottle, economic development is happening and it's happening fast. And we've got someone who's running around with a bottle catching lightning. Just in context, before we had any sort of activity, at least one, maybe two of my colleagues voted for $25,000 to join up with the Worcester Business Development Corporation, which at the time, it was at least we were doing something. There was nothing in the works. I'm sure the people at WBDC are very, very good at what they did, but they didn't make anything happen. And we didn't sneeze at dropping an additional 25 there, so, Hal, I'm in agreement.
Good point.
I would, I would bump that up, recognizing every one of these is contingent upon the next fiscal year's funding, right? I don't anticipate this position being around for three, five years.
Yeah.
So with that, I would support your idea.
The only comment I have to make is the, I believe in the process in which they went through to compile all this information, and I would assume that they felt that it was a fair results that they got out of everything that they got here. All, all the different positions, not just economic, highway, or anybody else. They wouldn't, I don't think the town administrator would have presented it that way if he felt otherwise. It's kind of hard to single out one individual out of the, out of everybody that's going to affect without doing it across the board.
Well, it doesn't necessarily affect anybody else. Each one is, is separate. I think the, I think the, when they were reviewing, they had certain criteria they were using, and I don't think, in my, my opinion, sufficient emphasis on results achieved and, and the things that need to be achieved in the future and how important they are to the town. So I can't overstate that, that this is the ballgame for the town. We really have no other new sources of revenue to amount to anything. We don't want to hit the residential homeowners, so this is the way we should be putting the, putting our emphasis and, and back this. I think it's a small investment for the town to make for what we've received already many times over.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If it helps, I don't know how muddy the waters are not, but the single most important thing, I think, in terms of the integrity of the system, is that the position remain M1. Because once you say performance elevates you to a level of skills that are not required of the position, I think that's where the integrity of the system is truly upset. In terms of steps, however, those can be offered by way of merit and has been done elsewhere in this proposal. It was just that the scope of, or the size of the merit jump here is larger than any other contemplated, which is why I've left it the way I've left it for the board to decide, because I think there is a point at which it rises to the level of being a pretty significant policy decision that may have some ramifications with other employees, but which fits within the overall scheme of things. One of the things that we needed to do here is give some of our employees credit for the things they had already done well before comp reform happened, but which would not have happened if they had not done it. E-permitting is a really big example of that, where it is no longer a project that's being implemented, but so much of the work that went into it was done at a very high level of professionalism, well, well beyond what that person was paid to do it, that we gave, on the building commissioners' recommendation, steps to that employee so that they would be higher up in the, in the scheme of things, in terms of pay. You're doing this, you would be doing the same thing here, it's just a substantially larger increase. Now, that's where the, so any conversation about step acceleration is a performance conversation that for an employee who is not the town administrator, they have the right to not have that discussed in public. But at the same time, I mean, this is, you're making a financial decision here. The other information, I think, should be on the record as the employee has an engineering background and therefore is adding value on the actual administration of grants and project administration that someone who may have the title economic development director but doesn't have that background doesn't provide. So in terms of, if you're looking for me as the manager's input, I am not uncomfortable with any decision you make, but I, I left money in the budget so you could make a decision if you wanted to, to change the way this came out. I want to be able to look the other five people I worked with in the face and say, we presented the information according to the system that we followed, knowing full well that if I learned anything in law school, for every rule, there is.
An exception.
An exception.
So ultimately, Matt, you're looking to, like, regardless of, this is just proposing what step that they're in. You asked us to keep them in the bucket that was recommended.
Yeah, I think the only way, you really undermine what we've done here is we change the, the grade, because I don't know if there's any way to change that score.
No, I agree with you. Like, if you have somebody that's at a, like, you've clearly defined M1 versus M5 all the way up through. So, you know, I mean, the easiest and best way to handle it, on the municipal side anyway, is, as you would recommend it, through steps, but.
We can determine that as the board, which step.
You are the chief executive officer of the town.
So in order to go on, you have lower, sorry, in order to go on to the low end of your salary survey that you looked at, you would be at the minimum of the step 25. That would bring it up 30%.
That's, I think, that puts a little bit over 80, is that right?
So on the back of your presentation, of the table?
Yeah.
So I, you know, just go over straight to the number, step 25 for an M1 is $80,258.
How much is the 26th step?
There is no 26.
That's it?
It goes 25 to 3.
25 to 3.
All right.
Is there any opportunity to, and I'm totally fine if we do that, I think that makes perfect sense, but to incentivize the employee with certain benchmarks, does this system give us a little flexibility to keep him running around?
I, I'm tracking with you, and we're trying to do it, I would use a different device. So for an employee who is under the personnel bylaw and not eligible for a contract, if we provide that form of bonus to I-2 specific targets, it gets a little bit dicey, because I think you have to make it available to everyone and set metrics for everyone. However, if you want to accomplish the same thing without doing steps but still getting to the same number, you could potentially think about a stipend that is somehow tied to some specific aspect of the job description that may or may not stay with that person.
Three years, three, four.
So in the case of the highway foreman, he is the safety and health, he's OSHA 40, plus he has all of his teach, train the trainer and all the rest of it. So that stipend I'm proposing in the budget will go from $3,000 a year to $5,000 a year because it's very important that we, but that doesn't mean that that person will always be the OSHA person. The way the stipend is set up for the fire chief to be the emergency management director, it is not tied to the position of fire chief. It is a stipend for the role of emergency management director.
It has, it has met.
And it has met. So you could do that here, keep the salary at 66, but create a stipend, but if I did that, I would tie it to specifically the duty of grant writing, because I can imagine grant writing duties, if this person were, you know, if the work got done and this person were to return to retirement, we would still have that grant writing necessity. It may not fit with the next, if there ever is another economic development person, it may not fit with the skill set. If we don't hire a new economic development person after Bob leaves, then that role would naturally go to the job description of the community development director. Or some pieces, one to the town administrator, the other to the community development, somebody's got to do it. It is a tremendous amount of work. And I think those who have been watching the way the staff floats around Town Hall, you know that this employee is spending many, many hours here just chasing details, especially this federal grant. It's nutty bar, how many things that we have to put on a piece of paper for these people. But it's above and beyond.
I think it might be easier just stepping with, staying with a step and.
It'd just be incumbent upon whoever's around this table to remember that we were looking at maybe a stipend incentive, but opted for the set. So if in three years, this position's no longer funded.
It's a new ballgame.
I kind of like the stipend idea.
I think the step's a lot cleaner.
You think the steps is cleaner?
It's easier for town administrator to manage. So now, let's talk about the stipend real quick. So if it's grant writing that is associated, but then they hold in Tim and hold in Lisa and hold in Matt, so what percentage does it get? If it's just a step, it's clean. You know what you're doing, you're done. Because there's a lot, just watching the progress through this whole economic thing, it's not just one person. I know we, we made him the poster child, but there's a lot of people that support that whole thing. So I think by doing a stipend, it could get a little disruptive.
So here's my question, Matt, is, we do the step thing in it, what did you say, it was step 25, M1, step 25. And next year, Bob decides, I'm retiring. You know, I'm going to hop in my IV and go out to the Hoover Dam and do whatever it is that retired people do.
At the Hoover Dam.
At the Hoover Dam.
Maple syrup.
Yeah, whatever. We now want to backfill the position because there's still more economic development to do. Are we bound to bring somebody in at M1, step 25?
No, you'd start them off at step 1, actually start them off at probationary wage.
Depends what the person brings to the table. So if you're fresh out of school and you haven't done anything, well, you're not going to get much. But if you have 25 years experience, so you, Hal decides to jump into that role, then he's going to bring more to the table than somebody out of school, so you're going to go with that.
I just want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent, like, it's more of a.
I think we're making a strong statement that we appreciate the economic development opportunity that has been created through a lot of hard work, creativity, and collaboration.
And a lot of people have contributed too. I think, you know, Bob's taken the lead, but other people have made it happen too. It's the whole team.
It's a team effort. Matt's had a lot of improvement too, as much as he doesn't like to take public credit.
Make a motion.
So before we get into motions and things like that, do you require a motion from us tonight to move forward on this, or is the intent to go through just the, the budget presentation itself?
The budget is a screaming baby that needs to go to bed.
It is.
So the more.
Is it colicky?
It's colicky too. So the more loose ends that the board can tie up, the faster you'll see a budget presentation. I'm still trying to get the numbers and the budget message to you by the close of business first.
Faster, I'll get a budget number.
What's that?
Faster, I'll get a budget number.
First of, yeah. So he, he can't get anything until I've done all the rest of it, so.
Nice. What, can we get through, before we make any motions, can we go through the rest of the changes to the pay grades and managers and things like that? We've got a bookmark on a potential change to one of them and just make it in a single motion at the end of the presentation.
So for Lisa's sake, note taker's sake, so far, there are two votes that we need, right? One is the structural change of the Board of Health.
Yep.
And the second would be whatever motion the board wants to make in economic development.
Does that work for you? Tim, does that work for you?
As long as we're not a journey.
That's it. Yeah, I think that's great. Good discussion.
Mike, your thoughts? Hold the vote towards the end, in case there's other positions we want to change.
I'm waiting for the end, because you don't know who else is going to pop up.
Exactly.
All right, so they're marching now through the management positions. And I'll, given the hour, I'm going to move fairly quickly. And I'll, given the hour, I'm going to move fairly quickly. I'm going to remind the board that one of the things that we flagged early on is that the more recently someone has been hired, the more likely it is that we set the salary to attract candidates. Without respect to where it would put us on the comp table because it was, that was like being chained to the wall, unless we went to, unless we went to town meeting and asked for reform, we wouldn't be able to fix the problem, right? So this is why we're, we are where we are. But because we did that, when we did the benchmarking, we found out that many of those people who are recently hired are within the thick of it in terms of what's being offered in other towns, the same job or even slightly bigger job. So what you see, I have in the color version of this, it's a little bit more obvious. Here it's just, pardon me, a light gray color, but these cells that are shaded in are the employees who have been most recently hired and you'll notice that the actual budget impact of the comp reform is always going to be smaller in those shaded boxes. And the shading is just a memory device to remind you that this might be a new person. So by far, the person who has sat frozen at the step for the longest time is, is the highway superintendent, who obviously has been here a lot longer than ten years. Remember that the step is being set at the time in the seat and not time working for the town. So the highway superintendent has worked for over fifteen years and therefore would be at the top grade, M4 step fifteen. So the salary adjustment is twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. And change, right? Treasurer-collector, increasingly important that the town maintain its competitiveness with this position. If you watch the MMA job board, this is one of the positions that's out there a lot because it's a tremendous amount of financial responsibility and we've had the same employee here for over fifteen years. So there's an adjustment to M2, step fifteen. The principal assessor is a recent hire. In our discussion, this was not, this was an advertisement that was open for a long, long, long time, never got filled on the basis of the advertisement or public recruitment effort. While the recruitment was still open, we made outreach to people who are already working for other communities. In other words, we poached, that was a joke, you can laugh. We poached the principal assessor, but the cost of bringing him over is try to get me as close to eighty, which is what he was making in Oxford, here in Douglas. So that required hiring the person at step five. I'm going to preserve the actual time in the seat with the assignment to M2 step three. So that's why that number goes, the step goes down, is we hired him at step five, just to get him in the door. Community development director, that is a similar situation. It took us a tremendously long time to fill this position, even at a competitive salary. Remember, we had that two-headed advertisement, right? We said, if you're a town engineer, do this. If you're, if you're an engineer, do this. If you're a planner, do that. And we'll take either and we'll set the salary accordingly. When you go to the benchmarks in the back of this deck, you'll see that the salary the person was hired at is very competitive and should not change much in terms of makeups. So that is, that is why this is assigned at step ten, because we're not going to cut anybody's pay as a result of this. This is the one job in town hall that will be as big as the person who occupies the seat makes it. So you could almost logically say that this person could potentially, not this individual employee, his position would potentially develop enough skills and enough insight to the operations of the town to more or less function on a day-to-day basis, almost like an assistant town manager, right? So when the town engineer was here, he had a procurement background and was a resource not only on engineering issues and planning issues, but on procurement and other administrative tasks. So that when we got into COVID, the logical thing to do with the town engineer rather than lay him off, was to move him over to do procurement for all of the programs that we did, feeding people, feeding seniors, feeding kids. So this position, in my mind, needs to be preserved at this salary point in order to not only retain current staff, but to be competitive going forward. Building commissioner is hired relatively recently, again, had to be hired at a higher step. So we hired at step seven. The impact of the step at a salary at this level is pretty big. So a 2.25% step under the old system has the impact that you see in the middle column. We just had to try to approximate that with step five. So there's a difference between these two. This is one employee who would do better under the existing system than the replacement. Probably the only one. Are there any questions about this page?
I feel sympathetic in the building commissioner situation, given the difficulty in hiring, retaining building commissioners and with the building boom that's going on right now and money available from permit fees and taxes, et cetera. I think that's sort of like an adjunct, at least for the next year or two, with economic development. So I'd like to see a bump up here as well. Do you have any suggestions how that could be accomplished?
I think you'd do it the same way that we do it with the economic development is just change the step.
Yeah, I agree with both of them. I would like to see that at a step ten because otherwise he's losing, that position's losing money. He's going to wait five years in order to come up to speed. So it's not a huge increase, but it's, it's a competitive increase for surrounding town that they're paying.
M2 step ten is eighty-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-three.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with Mike, either a ten or a fifteen, but.
Put that down for a vote then. Are we good to move on? On the last page, it speaks for itself. We have, to this point, been treating the adult social center director and library director in the same grade and step. It is actually a fact that the social center director has been in the seat longer. Just remind the.
Two calls.
Right. And to remind the board, we originally had a very big gap here that we did away with that town meeting as part of our compliance with the Pay Equity Act, is the rule, in terms of their, in abstraction, these two roles are very similar. Maintain a building, public facing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there was no real reason for them to be teased out and be treated differently. So we equalized this, these salaries. But now there's a longevity difference, which would filter through the new system and needs to be adjusted. I have put, I want to put on the comp table, even though I have no plans to fill it in the immediate future, but I want to have it clearly on the table so that we know what we're talking about when we say we want to fill the position. This is a facilities manager and this is another conversation between the superintendent of schools and the town administrator about what we really desperately need. People are more important than buildings, so we would try to do HR first. But our buildings are complex. The town of Douglas, for a small town, for crying out loud, we have more buildings than you can shake a stick at.
Well, there's no continuity through the process. Everybody's going in different directions.
It's true, but I mean, I've worked for a city and I've worked for a town twice as big as Douglas and we didn't have as many buildings. It's just, as you've moved away from buildings, you vacated them and done nothing with them. So they're still in the portfolio. So we have quite a wide range of real estate under the ownership of the town. And our school buildings are various vintages. Frankly, they suffer from a lack of planning and addressing of deferred maintenance issues. We have people who are very good at maintaining the status quo, but what we want to do here is get somebody who's going to get around the curve and begin to have a plan that informs the capital budget and building facilities committee. And after this position was rated by the five of us, we came out, this would be an M3. We have a tremendous amount of responsibility because the schools are involved and the thought would be that that needs to start off, close to ninety thousand.
Would that be tied to any expected retirements over at the school?
Don't get me started.
Not a right one.
All right, so to put this, because I don't want to be overly critical, because I think we've had a great relationship with the schools, I would say, an opportunity for us to work together for the good of the town would be to look at all of our vendor relationships and the amount of money we've spent keeping these buildings open and running properly. Somebody who has more time to focus on that could be much more efficient and establish us with relationships that over time are going to be a much healthier budget construct than we have right now. Right now, we repair things when they break.
Yeah.
And what we need to do is we need to get ahead of that.
This, this person wouldn't be doing any of the physical work. They would just be identifying.
The brain part, the part that we, we need to, you know, every one of these buildings has a big HVAC system. Every one of these buildings has a backup generator. Every one of these buildings has a pretty significant heating system. It all needs attention. Some of this stuff is going to be twenty or more years old and it's, what is the next solution going to look like? We need somebody who's going to pay attention to this specific set of issues. But right now, I have no plans to fill it. It's not in the budget.
That concludes the.
That includes, you know, the management piece, which ends up getting more discussion because there's a lot of skill gap in this question, right? Has the board had the opportunity to scan through the office assistant, take your temperature? We haven't actually spent a lot of time. It's five past eight. I just don't know what your appetite is to go through every single office position, if you want me to continue to march on.
Oh, we could call up the ones we wanted to discuss, I guess.
I'll hit the highlights here on the first page. The, I mentioned this already, this will be part of one of your votes. We have an office assistant currently at OA2 step two, in the board of health, working fourteen hours a week. We'd like to take that salary and transfer it, pun intended, I guess, move it over to the transfer station for their budget. Not seeing any hour increases on this page. Going to the next page. We have very recent hire, the assistant to the town accountant. I wanted to take, this is the second row, the adult social center administrative and outreach assistant. This is a long-term employee on a part-time basis that stepped into a thirty-hour-a-week I'm going to move this position from the MS2, step two, over to the OA table, which results in a five thousand dollar raise. I think everything else on this page is the same number of hours, just changing. So we have three very recent hires here. If there's no questions on that page, we'll keep going. We have a, I wouldn't get overly hung up on the part-time office assistant, community development. We budget this position at ten hours a week. The actual time is more like five hours a week. I'm going to continue to budget it at ten hours a week for when we need it. This is a retired person who has maintained the connection with the town and she's a great wealth of knowledge and especially around some of our history, some of the decisions that were made over the course of many years. So we're leaving it in the budget, but we're not going to make it a major part of the overall reform effort because there's some sensitivity to pension offset and some of the other things.
It's kind of, it's not broken, don't fix it.
In terms of the library, so this is the fourth row down. A library director is requesting, and I think this would be another vote, Lisa, because this is a new title and new position. We have a person who has a degree in archive, is basically a professional archivist. We've took, typically in the budget, we have two library, eight positions, and we have combined the two of them. We're basically using all the hours for the two positions for this one person, one position. There's a significant skill improvement, so this is not an OA1, this is an OA2. Doesn't rise to the level of OA3 because we're not yet looking to this position to have a significant impact on the way the town operates in terms of its systems. There's an open conversation that we need to have in the next year about tapping into this archivist's skills to help us organize the second floor here and make all those records electronic in a professional way so that somebody ten years from now can actually find something electronically. And in that case, we might want to upgrade it. This would be a situation where we would actually increase the grade of the position in order to get the pay to the right spot because that's a huge undertaking. If you've seen all the file cabinets upstairs, and I'm sure you have. That's all I have on this page. Anybody want me to stop?
No, you're good.
Chuff, chuff, chuffing along, hoarse voice and all. Nobody's mocking me yet.
I already mocked you earlier.
One of our most underpaid departments in town has been highway and this has been a longstanding issue. And the only reason why it doesn't jump off the page at you is we've already had some people retire. So if, if those folks hadn't retired, you would see much larger increases in this far right column. But we have two new employees here and even being new, their salaries go up, one goes up thirty-four hundred, the other goes up forty-four hundred. We're pretty far behind in our posted rates for these positions. So we've got to bring them up. We also have what is no longer a 2023 title of lead man. Lead person is a really, you know, your, your worker with so much experience that everybody on the job site is always looking to that person for leadership on the very specific aspects of doing any job and knows where everything is buried in town. No one has suffered more under the present system than this employee because he's been here for more than thirty years, but he's been stuck at step ten for twenty, close to here.
Has it impacted his ponytail?
So it should absolutely not surprise anyone that this is a fourteen thousand dollar change.
Good. It's good. Has it impacted the ponytail at all or not?
I just, you know, I want to be there the day he retires because he made a promise at town meeting of what he was going to do that day and I kind of want to see it.
Me too.
It's going to make Chief Tom look like a bunch of zillies. Just for the joy of it, right? But I think the rest is pretty self-explanatory. The overall investment in the highway department is twenty-nine thousand dollars for the hourly employees. Just remember that what you're doing here, I'm going to go back a couple of pages. So it's twenty-nine thousand. What am I doing? How am I doing? What are we doing? Let's call it thirteen for the superintendent, so that's forty-two. Call it sixteen for the foreman. Well, actually call it almost eighteen with the stipend change. So it's fifty thousand dollars of the one sixty, it's going to the highway department. And then we have to remember Mary Beth, what's Mary Beth's adjustment off the top of your head? Two thousand, three thousand?
Forty-six, nine, three. Four thousand, six, ninety-three.
So what did I just say? Fifty thousand? So it's fifty-five thousand dollar investment in the highway department. It's long overdue.
It's a good investment because they're the department that has progressively said nothing and just kept plugging along and doing what they needed to do.
So that basically, Mr. Chairman.
My wife. Were we true?
If there are no further questions, that's. If there are no further questions, then it's the presentation complete.
Matt, thank you for the, you and, and the whole group of people that put all the work into this.
It was impossible to do without everyone helping. So to Jean and Lisa and Holly and Cheryl, many, many thanks, because they had many, many insights. This is a group effort, a group product.
It's, it's a good product, and it shows that there was a lot of thought. And it was very thoughtful in the presentation, like you definitely looked at everybody and figured out a way to, you know, get them up to a modernized pay rate and, while being fair and precise with as, as much as you could. So it's nice to see.
Just one question. How does this comp reform process compare to doing a DDA grant?
If you buy a, if you get a consultant to do this, it's $35,000, $40,000 if they do it a certain way. Don't believe Sutton. They'll tell you they did $5,000. All they did was look at job descriptions, they didn't do the rest.
Yes. The first motion, which is the reorganization of the Board of Health.
The thing is, he gets a bonus for dealing with Deb Evans, so, although she's joy, but still.
Four total motions.
She's very attentive in detail.
She still likes me.
She's still talking to us.
Four motions to do.
To move the salary of the Board of Health Office Assistant to the transfer station budget.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The piece of that is Deb, the office manager, all on the general fund.
Oh, so let's do that one.
Secondary.
We'll do a second motion.
Do a, we'll do a 1A.
A 1A.
It's like a horse race.
A second horse.
To move the office manager of the Board of Health to the general fund.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion on 1A? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Economic development facilitator, move him to an M1, step 25 at $80,258.
Change.
Direct, yeah. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Building Commissioner, M2, step 10 at $87,963. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on that one. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And then library, create the position of archivist.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion?
We're not funding that.
No, we fund that.
We fund that. It was on a part-time basis.
I don't appoint a student, I cannot fire the person. Those are the only two things we don't do on the town side. All the rest of it is us.
All right. Any other discussion?
No.
Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks for reading.
And I believe that concludes all of our motions. So that makes the important motion. We want to make that one.
I have that to the expert.
I don't believe there's an executive motion required.
It's a privilege motion, it's the easiest one to make. You don't even have to...
Did we endorse the compensation?
Oh, the whole thing, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we got to endorse.
We didn't endorse the compensation.
I was just following the chairman.
I know, I was looking, focusing on the...
Don't follow me.
But don't lose, don't lose sight of the forest for the trees. Please vote the whole package.
Hey, it was the chairman that won.
It was me.
Yeah, you're a big rush, right? Everybody thinking about donuts.
That's what it is.
Well, with an eye towards the future and an appreciation for our employees, I would make a motion that be accept the fine work of the Compensation Reform Committee as it's been presented and discussed tonight.
And amended.
And amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now the other...